Already started and everything looks fine.
Hi Christie, are you there?
I'm here.
Alright. Oh, let me see if you can hear my gavel.
Oh, I can hear it.
Okay, so the trick I'm gonna show you is if you go up here to that bar top and right click, keep on top.
Alright.
So you can make it smaller if you want or whatever, but that way you can use your computer in the background and that will always stay on top.
Okay, cuz I've struggled with that.
Yeah, sometimes you'll disappear and you have to go back through your tabs and find people. This will always keep it on top.
Hey Chad.
Yes ma'am.
I did notice that, remember we turned off like the emoji cons and all of that kind of reaction stuff? The raised hand is still showing, so I think that when we turned, that's where it was located when that was turned on. And I think after you turn that off, the raised hand stays put. So that will be there. I'll just keep an eye on it if anybody uses it.
Yeah, the only time we're gonna pay attention is maybe visitors, right?
The visitor section, right. Okay.
So wait, wait a second. So where is that? Is that under speaker view?
Nope, just wave your mouse over the bottom of your screen and you'll have your little toolbar light up where you can turn your mute or your video on and off. And there should be a raised hand.
It doesn't show.
Yeah.
Oh, is she, are you using the app or are you using?
She's using the app.
I'm using the app too and I have that whole thing.
Cool, so you're the boss.
Hmm, that's weird. I don't, I wouldn't wanna raise my hand though. Like everybody should be able to.
The one time I saw it, it was... The one time I saw it on Zoom, it was, it was, actually I never, I never could find it to tell you the truth, the few times that I've done Zoom.
So where, if you wanted to mute yourself, where is that?
That's the far left and then stop video, then there's a big blank.
Yep.
Then there's participant numbers to.
Yep.
Share screen.
Yep.
And record. Why would I have a?
Say that again, you cut your sound as... Your hand, your sound is cutting in and out.
Oh, great. I have a record button.
So after you said... Yes, you could technically record locally.
Right, it says on this computer. That's all I have.
What, I didn't hear what you said though cuz it cut out. What was after share screen?
Record.
Oh, and then participants was before that?
Yes.
Okay, weird. So I have share screen after participants and then raise hand and then pause, stop recording. So that's weird. It's really weird that it would only let the hosts raise their hand. That makes no sense.
Right.
I'll have to look into that.
Well, we'll have to ask who, who has that working.
Well, I think um, you might, you'll probably be able to do your whole visitor poll thing anyway.
Yeah, I'll just do it that way.
I'm gonna go ahead and mute myself. My household's getting a little rambunctious.
Yeah, I'm gonna mute for now too.
Secondary class, so.
I'm, I'm not sure that I'm wanting to.
You are.
Hi Brett.
Hello, Paulina, how are you?
Good.
Did you have a good vacation?
Yeah, it was three days.
Oh, well, that's better than nothing.
Yeah, I know. I'm down here at City Hall.
Oh wow.
I have company at home and my meeting room is a bedroom, so.
Ah, okay. Yeah, we're having the first company in fifteen months. So they're out for a walk right now.
Sounds good. So we got about five minutes. Did you guys decide on a date for the meeting you were trying to put together?
Not yet. I only heard back from Andrew. Yeah, it's been a little more complicated than I had thought possible, but that's how it goes. Everybody's busy for some reason. So we'll figure it out. Chad had a good suggestion of doing the business report at the special meeting instead of tonight, so I think that's a good suggestion since we have a lot of agenda items.
Okay. You would have done that under counselor report?
Yeah, I would have done it under counselor reports. And I like Christie's avatar Princess Leia. That's great.
It's on her emails and I'm always going like this trying.
Yeah, I know. It's pretty small on the email.
Is that Princess Leia? Is that Princess Leia? It looks like Princess Leia. Now I can tell.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's my alter ego. My Google account has it as everything.
Yeah, mine's probably Emperor Palpatine.
Just waiting for three counselors. Oh, two more.
Need anything else?
Thank you Chad. Hi Rita.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So awesome. Awesome. Nice to see you, Paulina.
Good to see you.
Did you go golfing today?
We have not golfed. The new puppy came.
Well, what's your puppy's name?
Not my puppy, Sharon.
Oh, oh. It's nice to see you, Paulina. Let me get my stuff here.
Rita, I'm down here at City Hall tonight cuz.
For some reason, I lost my connection.
We can hear you Brett.
We can hear you. I can't see anything now.
They call this the stakeout meeting.
I have a leader in 2020, Gartner. Magic Quadrant for Meeting Solutions. Showing up.
I don't know what that is.
We have Peter there with the name Amy Mark.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on here.
I wanna get back to the meeting.
I better.
We're just talking about alter egos.
Everyone has the power to rename themselves or I can do it for you.
Oh, okay. Why don't you do it for me cuz I'm obviously incompetent with Zoom.
Your name's up there Brett. It says Brett Warren, City of Gerhardt.
Yeah, we were talking about Peter's name Brett.
Oh, Peter's name. I'm good, but I can't see anybody.
Okay, so you might wanna refresh or go ahead and close out.
Yeah, I'm gonna just close out and log back in. Okay.
Como, looks like you're on.
Ah, okay. I just kept closing windows and everybody showed up.
Oh, at the top of your screen that you're looking at, are you in the web browser or the actual application?
Uh, I clicked on apple, application.
So the top, the top bar where it says, it's white and it says Zoom meeting.
Yep.
If you right click that.
Okay.
Do you see a selection that says keep on top? Is that? Brett's frozen again. Josh, I hear you, pager.
Gosh, he's muted.
We're waiting for Carrie. And Dan.
There's Brett again.
Good evening. Hello.
Dan, is that you?
It is me.
Hello, welcome.
Good evening all.
Hi Dan.
Evening Dan.
Josh, I enjoy seeing the couch up on cinder blocks. Classy.
You know, as people with taller legs, it helps so they don't have to have our kneecaps in our face when we're sitting down.
Cut that. Way to save some money Josh.
The couch was free also.
Okay, I'll go ahead and give Counselor Smith a call real quick.
Hmm. So is it better to download the application or run it in the cloud?
Well, I think Chad was suggesting to me to download the app and I did it. It took about, well, maybe I already had it, but anyway.
After you download it once, you won't have to do it again. It'll remember cuz it'll be on your hard drive and then when you click into a Zoom meeting, it may give you the option to use the app first or the other, but then if you click the app, it'll just open right away.
Okay.
Well, that's good to know. I didn't realize this was a Zoom meeting until about five minutes before the meeting started. So it was a good thing I, I read the, I read the agenda, so otherwise I'd be in limbo somewhere.
Kept it simple. Used City Hall's phone number for the ID.
Thank you. Thank you. I was like freaking out and going, oh my gosh, but it was very simple to follow your instructions, so thank you.
You're welcome.
The, the phone number was not lost on those of us that still try to memorize numbers. I attempted to call Counselor Smith. His voicemail picked up, so I left a message there and with his text.
Up, here he is. He's calling in.
Excellent.
Carrie, are you there?
I'm here luckily.
Hi Carrie.
We all ready, we all ready to go guys?
I'm ready.
Alright.
All ready.
We're gonna call the June 2nd, City of Gerhardt City Council in session. I know. I brought my gavel back to City Hall guys. My first item is declaration of any conflict of interest.
No.
No.
Okay, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, May 5th, 2021. Any comments or motion to approve?
I move that we accept the City of Gerhardt meeting minutes of May the 5th, 2021.
I second.
Is there any discussion? I do have one comment on my mayor's report, although I could not find the email anywhere under the discussion about a playground vendor from Portland emphasizing the importance of inclusiveness. Also, I got an email from a Gerhardt resident, but he didn't have her name and I couldn't find the email. So we'll leave the minutes as they are. I just wanted to report that. So all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, the minutes are approved as submitted. The next item on the agenda is the Planning Commission, May 2021. And Ginny Deedham did a letter to us. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, we'll just accept her report. Mayor's report, I just have a brief report. First of all, I know you all know this, but just, just to acknowledge that Bill Berg, a good friend of Gerhardt, died a couple of weeks ago now. I would just comment that I've had many communications with mommy, his wife. And Bill actually requested no memorial, formal memorial or celebration of life. And so she is going to accept his wishes in that, but is thinking about wanting to have a bench on the North Ridge Pet area in the future. And that was suggested to me from Mr. Schultz. So that, we just have a discussion with Chad at this point, so we'll see how that goes in the future. Second item is just the Parks Master Planning Group. I did not meet, but I've had briefing from a couple of members, including the chair. They met considering the general policies that were drafted and had some suggestions and those have been revised since their meeting. And there will be more discussion at the next meeting on those. These are general policies to guide further park planning. And we hope to have public hearings on the master parks plan in the September, October timeframe, hoping to get that completed by November, which is when the grant is due or you know, the work should be done. So we're quite well on track. The CERT team met. I did not attend that meeting either. I was still giving vaccines, I believe, that evening. And Josh, can you jump in if there's something or maybe in your report, if there's something that you would wanna report in more detail? And then on, for kids playground, both Chad and I have been looking at kids playground equipment that we've come across in our travels. And we found some really good examples of what we want and we're kind of tracking down the vendors that might be available to help us out with that. And I think that the funds that we've raised is somewhere upward of $30,000 at this time. And then finally, there was correspondence. It's been on my desk since January. And this came from the City of Seaside inviting me and I'm sure all of you as well to the prom centennial in August of this year, August 6th and 7th. They'll be celebrating that. And I finally RSVP'd today for that. And that's all I have. Counselor reports. Rita.
Well, I have nothing to report, but I need to meet with you soon about any overlapping of what I'm hoping for the Tree City and the parks. So I kinda wanna see how we can mesh that together. So I'll contact you and be, be in contact with you maybe next week. And that's all I have.
Perfect. And Brett?
Uh, yes, the, my hope had been to present the Small Business Committee Meeting Survey Report. Tonight, committee members wanted to have one last meeting to go over it before presenting it to the city council. So I think we're going to hold off for the special meeting upcoming on the 8th or next regular meeting. So we've been having trouble circling the wagons and getting together as a group. So everybody's schedules are so.
Brett, you've kind of.
Frozen.
Frozen.
Did I freeze up?
Better now. Did you have anything else Brett?
Oh, no. Wasn't I coming across? I, I said, no, I, oh, I'm getting a, your internet connection is unstable message. So sorry about that. No, I didn't have anything else to report this evening.
Thank you. And Dan Jesse?
I have nothing.
And Carrie?
Oh, I've got to report that I attended an LOC teleconference on homelessness. Again, we are really not in the ballpark with anything that they're presenting. They're, they're talking about cities with millions of dollars and of extra money that they can spend on homelessness and again, in talking with the chief, I'm, we're gonna wait until the House bill passes or fails before we start crafting something. And I have not had a chance because of family growth to look to see if Peter's gotten any information to me on the internet about what he's done with other jurisdictions. So that's all I've got to say for that.
Okay, thank you very much counselors. And city officer reports. Chief of Police. He submitted a report. We got that earlier today, I think, or yesterday. Any comments on that?
I, I didn't see it, so I can't comment.
Okay.
Well, I have a comment on it. I do have a comment. And my comment is I noticed on the police report that there were several unresolved thefts, one, two, and three. And I would really like to know what those are about. So I'm just saying I'd like some more information on those.
And I wondered the same question.
Thank you.
And moving on to Far Chief. Interim Chief Como.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Hopefully I can keep this out of my eyes. I can read my report to you guys. Oh, I believe you all should have our kind of run sheet or report of all the calls from last month. We had 68 calls. Of those 68 calls, one of them, we received aid from Seaside for two barns that were on fire. 10 of the calls, we sent aid to assist Seaside and calls that they had going on. For some perspective in that, we ended last year, 2020. We ended May of last year with call number 164. We ended May this year for call number 215. Kinda give you a bigger perspective. Last year was a total, was, was a record year. We had a total of 507 calls. This year, we are 86 calls ahead of last year for last month and to date, we're about 90 calls ahead of last year.
Wowzer.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
It's crazy. Crazy how much we're going. Mayor, you asked about CERT. From my knowledge, the CERT meeting was kind of a regrouping as well as a prepping for future meetings and kind of a training schedule and such with what Lieutenant Hutch and Sharon was moving forward with.
Okay.
From that, I don't think, I've not looked at Lieutenant Hutch's notes, so I'm not 100% sure everything they went. Uh, last month, we made a good push for mental health awareness. We now have a countywide CISD group routine, which stands for Critical Incident Stress Debriefing. It's a group of chaplains to respond if and when needed. The chaplains are current and/or retired pastors and police officers in the county. It's a great asset to our county to help all responders countywide as, to aid us in mental health and help us and all of our responders handle everything that we see and go through. Last month was also wildfire preparedness month. So in light of that, we publicized it pretty well on social media. And with social media, our presence has gotten much better and much more current. We implemented, now have a political outreach committee within our department. This will help in community awareness while we are engaged on incidents to help citizens be aware and avoid certain areas of danger or congestion. As well as we're putting up great information after incidents to let the community know the congestion's cleared up, the area's safe and help them all to gain knowledge of the events that took place. Last month, we were able to focus on some wild, focus on wildfires and summer preparation. Last month, we were able to focus on some wild focus on wildland fires and summer preparation. We were able to obtain much needed wildland PPE and equipment, which so close to fire season is a very difficult task. As many suppliers have items in short supply and are back ordered. Last month, I worked alongside the county fire chief to prepare for summer and mobilizations. We completed a great deal of office and station spring cleaning as well as organization, which was much needed for general operation purposes, as well as we had to find room for our water rescue program. We have acquired the needed PPE and equipment for the water rescue program. We have a solid crew of six firefighters that have passed the water swim tests and have been trained for surface water rescue. We're moving forward to the second step and in implementing the water rescue program. We're now completing training for RWCs, which is Rescue Water Craft. Next, we'll be training for Swift Water and Ocean Rescue. After that, we're finishing our taskbooks and getting everything signed off so we can be certified different aspects of water rescue. We're currently still working under the umbrella of Seaside Fire for Water Rescue Program, and it's our goal in one to two years, we'll have our own water rescue program up and running and moving forward, be able to use Seaside for mutual aid callouts throughout the county, just like we do now. We were already super short on room in our station for normal operations. So with the new equipment we have for the water rescue program, we are forced to park one of the apparatuses outside and lock it. We were originally delayed in having water rescue program due to lack of room, as well as contemplated not getting into it currently because of the same issue. This is a result, this is a result, as an even bigger deficit of room we have or don't have here, much of it with reorganizing, we're able to borrow some of that room back. I believe we effectively kept everything moving forward last month, didn't have many large things slip through. There have been many operational meetings with local and state agencies to change the status of department heads. This seems like a small task that is much larger in perspective in order for our department to operate smoothly. We're looking forward to the summer and excited to see what happens. And if anybody has any questions or anything, or like a station tour, would like to see our new water rescue gear or apparatus, what have you, get ahold of myself or Lieutenant Hutch, and we'd love to show you guys around.
Thank you very much, Josh Como. And one question I had, the social media presence, is it Facebook and Instagram or?
Yep, Facebook and Instagram.
All right.
I have a question for Josh, if I may.
Yes.
Josh, how many of your calls last month were the medical kind where you have to pick up old people?
So I went out last month, but I can tell you last year, you typically hear a lot of people say that, you know, the fire service is 90% medical. The last three years, and I know this because when I submit us for grants that we were successful in getting the Scott Air packs, 52 to 54% of our calls are medical, the rest are rescues or fires or car crashes or calls of service or things alike. So it's it's about 50/50.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, and next is City Treasurer.
Justine? Hello. Just excited to be here and learning so many new things. I appreciate everybody's support and their help as I learn and maneuver all of the new things. I just have two things that I wanted to mention. One is, you know, we're in the process of looking at refinancing our debt service. So we have been working with a company out of Portland, and they have been working with us on a what's called a POS or a preliminary official statement. And it's a summary of just kind of who the city of Gearheart is, our financial situation. And they are going to hopefully have by Tuesday, June 8th, a draft that will be circulated to all the council members, and they can review it and comment if they see anything that they feel like needs additional correction or clarification. Our bond rating will go out the week of June 14th or 18th through the 18th. They're not sure which day yet. And so we'll meet and try to see if we can get a high bond rating and then bond pricing and the selling will be July 7th and 8th. So we're moving along on that and and getting things complete and finished up for the financial side of that. Also, I wanted just to mention, you know, we're approving, hopefully approving the final budget in the public hearing tonight. And we would, we we are going to have to just make one tiny change, nothing to do with any of the numbers. But we're just going to move the Gearheart Road District down. It was inside the budget, and the Road District actually is its own taxing entity. So it has its own tax levy rate, permanent tax rate. So we need to do independent documents. So they have to have their own, it'll be one form that we submit to the state in the county, and they have to have their own resolution, that particular permanent rate. So we are, the budget would not change, we're just going to take that one page and move it to the end. So it's kind of two budgets in one.
That, and you did give us a revenue and expense report July through May 28th in our packet.
Correct.
Counsel, is that everything then?
That's it.
Does counsel have any questions for Justine?
I I have questions, I don't know if they're either for Chad or Justine. I know you just took over, so there's this money situation that I talked at council two months ago. And last month, Chad said that three of them had been working on it and they couldn't rectify. I was wondering, have you worked on any of the money situation where the overtime, money coming in for vehicle revenue and manpower expenses? And the money going out didn't add up by $12,000? And I'm just wondering, do you know anything about that?
That's in the fires, fire service.
Right.
We're still working on that. We still have to pull some data. I'm still learning organizational patterns here and how they go. And so we're trying to pull time cards and some other things that had just gotten backlogged and not filed yet. So we're still working on that, Carrie.
Okay, um, okay, and then my other question is on the general fund ordinary income. On 10-0021, it goes miscellaneous other, and it's $84,000. What is the miscellaneous income?
Things that are in there.
Things that are.
You're asking what's in there, right?
Well, it's what's miscellaneous income.
Yeah, let me let me pull it up here and I can look at it. Um, so let's see, refund from Cedars, the CARE Act, there was $40,000 for that. There was a fence permit, there was COVID relief CARES Act funds for 40,000.
Okay, so that it it has nothing to do with the fire, wildland fire?
No.
Okay, and in reading the report, if I go to oh, good grief. Overtime pay for the firefighters is $106,000 right now for the year. Does that money? Does it get absorbed in that one fund that goes fire equipment and manpower revenue, which is only $93,000? So there would be, is that other overtime money just normal overtime? Or is that two different funds and I'm not reading this correctly? Did I make sense?
Justine, I can I can help with that a little bit.
Okay.
And Josh, just curious, have we received our final check yet from the fires? What are we waiting for?
We're waiting for one more check, which was one of the bigger fires from California. So that will have revenue for manpower payroll as well as with the apparatus made.
Yeah, thank you very much.
That goes on the fire equipment manpower revenue? And that should even out with the overtime pay? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, it should, Carrie. And one of the things is with doing the audit, that's going to be also helpful for us to gain some better information about where we're at, getting this final payment. And then things were kind of put into different categories. So after we get done with the audit and finish through that process, then this is our next project that we're going to work on. But I'm confident that things are accurate, they're just spread around a little bit differently. But now Justine is helping us organize all of this, and I think future budgets will be easier to read.
Okay.
Can I, moving forward, Chad and Justine, if the firefighters had to go out next week and fight fires in Eastern Oregon or California, do you have confidence that you have an accounting system set up that will better track it at this point in time? Because I know I know you've been looking back.
Yeah, and I think what had happened is is they were lumped in regular accounts. And so then it's hard to separate them out without going back and looking at individual time cards and pulling them. So it would probably be in our best interest to charge those to, you know, even if they're in the fire department account, but charge them to add a specific new line item so that you can actually see that line item within their salary amount.
So is that something like the conflagration account?
Yeah, we could set up a special one that's for, you know, fire firefighting reimbursement or something account so that we can track those expenditures, so that when we get the time card, we're putting those funds in that account so that we can actually see that dollar amount rather than being mixed in with many different things. And then it's hard to pull it out without individually looking at every single time card.
Great, thank you.
Well, I have a question.
Oh, Heatherita?
Well, hi, Justine. I don't know if you'll be able to answer this, but Chad might be able, just because he's been here longer. I noticed that in the revenue and expense report that our transit room tax is 126,000 over what we budgeted. And I know that we budgeted to be really low last year because of COVID. But then when I looked at the the budget for the last two years, the revenue this year is higher than the last three years. And even though we have COVID, I don't know why our income would be higher than the last three years.
I can answer that.
More people are coming.
Is that why?
I would like to open this by saying the mayor was right. When I was putting the budget together last year, she told me that she thought more people would come to the city of Gearheart. I didn't believe her. So again, for the second time, the mayor was right. Of course, we had a lot more people coming in, spending time here because of COVID, because of Zoom and go to meeting and that sort of thing. So we have been making much more water, which I'll go into a little bit later. And we've seen, you know, more requests for services for sure. And that's just not all short term vacation levels. But yeah, so far, just to give you an idea, as a whole, we're about over budget for revenue already for the year. And we're not quite finished with the year by 150,000.
Right.
Though, and then our expenses so far are under budget by 253,000. So we're looking pretty good in the budget. We've still got June to get, we still have June to get through in regards to payroll and some ladder expenses, but we're holding tight until next year. And then just kind of go into the next budget. I think we've got pretty good cash carry forward if things go well.
Well, thank you.
May I ask a question back to the fire issue?
Go ahead, Dan.
It's more of a concept, I think I'm correct in this. So we will always have overtime associated with the fire department, whether or not we send a firefighter anywhere else to fight fire. Meaning, I believe, we traditionally, at least the last few years, when the chief started actually collecting the overtime that he was due, had overtime hours that were billed that will, I assume, continue in the city. So we can't just assume we're going to equal out money in and money out when it comes to sending firefighters out of our area. Is that a correct statement, Chad?
Yes, it is, Counselor Jesse. And that was kind of what Justine was alluding to, is that in the future, we're going to separate this out from normal, everyday firefighting, whatever that is, and the conflagration acts, so that we can have a better line item explanations. We'll split it up into firefighter, the revenue from the firefighters paid out to the firefighters, which typically equals zero minus a small administration fee. And then the revenue that we've taken in for the the truck rentals that they pay us on an hourly basis for our vehicles, that also will be separated, and we'll have a better idea of where we're putting our money. So some things that Justine was interested in, I think it's great stuff.
And I have one more question, but I.
Go ahead, Carrie.
And I think I'm not sure, but isn't it in the budget process, when you have a line item that goes over budget by $10,000, you have to have a supplemental budget for it? And the reason I ask is you've got $19,000 in over budget for a part time labor who's already made 30, almost $33,000, and you had him budgeted for 13,000. And because it's over budget, I thought state law require, or the Attorney General's model rules of budget process, you have to have a supplemental budget for that.
So you have to have a supplemental budget if you go over a certain percentage. So I think it's 15%. So if you go over more than 15%, you do have to have a supplemental budget in one line item category. But you can do transfer appropriations to, which Chad and I are looking at doing at the next meeting, where you can do a resolution to transfer. So let's say administrative is $74,000 under and fire is $15,000 over. You can appropriate a change from one to the other.
Okay.
I don't think that we'll have to do, I'm not sure that we'll have to do a supplemental budget at this point. I think that, but I do think we'll have to do a resolution transfer for appropriations.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. And just to add to that, we're likely adding that to the agenda for the special council meeting on June 8th, that we have decided that we are going to do. We've got some numbers I'd like to go over with the council in regards to fire station, the new fire station issue. And then Justine and I will be meeting tomorrow and we'll discuss the issue that she was just talking about. So we'll we'll let you know that it is on the agenda for that special council meeting.
I I had one question about the road department segregation out from the.
You're frozen.
Brett, if you can hear me, one of the things you could do is probably turn off your video feed for now and then just listen via audio.
Okay, all right. All righty, stop video.
Okay.
Go ahead, Brett.
Yeah, that's better. I can hear you better.
Did you have a question then?
Oh, yes, I did. Sorry, I didn't realize it wasn't heard. No, I was asking, I was curious about the segregation of the. Road fund into its own bucket. And I was curious, did we discover that? Internally, or was that something brought to our attention through the audit?
So apparently last year, when the resolutions were submitted, it the county had mentioned that. They want those separated out going forward. It was so small that I think before that they didn't really nitpick it. But but they really feel like that it's something that should be corrected. So my understanding is last June. When those resolutions were done and submitted, they had requested that those two be separate since they have. Two separate, if you if you go out to the county and you look at the tax sheets, they're actually two separate taxing entities. There's the Gearhart Road District and then there's the City of Gearhart. So they wanted those divided out so that. People could comment separately because the road district maybe has different people who that impacts rather than the City of Gearhart residents. So that they would have an opportunity to see it pulled out. And if they wanted to comment or have public, you know, input that they could. So we just this year.
So we rediscovered that request from last year and now we're implementing it.
Right, so we didn't realize that they actually, we knew they wanted all the supporting documents. So the the resolutions, we knew they wanted them in two. We didn't realize that they actually kind of wanted its own budget. And so they're okay with it being. One budget, two budgets in one document. But we had had it integrated inside of the document pages. So we're just going to take it from the current page and move it down to the end and put a little thing in there that says road district budget.
And just if I might, was it also that the ordinance itself or the resolution itself that we read? Included both the general fund and the road district into one resolution. So we're separating that out into two resolutions? Yeah, okay.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. That helps.
And Brent, background information, the county changed lawyers last year. And that's why we went to resolution instead of the way we used to do the adoption of the budget. And that's it, his, hers, their idea of how they want cities to do it in Klatsa.
Okay, thank you, Carrie.
Okay, we're going to move on if we can then to city attorney report. Peter?
Mayor, can I interrupt real quick? Super sorry.
Sure.
So go back and answer Councilor Smith's question. Out of the sixty-eight calls last month, thirty-nine of them were medical.
Thank you, Josh.
And I just got that that report you guys have on the basic incident type column, you can go through just the ones that say emergency medical are the regular in home medical calls.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Peter, you have the floor.
Great. So I think we have almost complete agreement on the material terms that we've discussed for the new. Fire station and park location. There are a few blanks left to fill in before it's brought to you for your considerations, such as the title company that we'll use. We will need to bring in a surveyor in order to survey the two parcels, one for the public park, the other for the fire station. As you're aware, this deal will be contingent upon us. Doing the trade for the land that's currently inside the urban growth boundary for the other. But if that contingency is met within the twelve month period. After the agreement is executed, then we would own both of those parcels. Regardless of whether the voters were to approve this or not. And that's a recognition by the. By the current property owners that if voters aren't ready this year, they might be ready in three. And those property owners really view this as an amenity. And so hope that whether it's in the very near term or a little bit later, that they would be able to. Be a fire station on that property. The park, of course, whether it is fully developed or not, I mean, that would be set aside as a park. And so it's been great working with them. The one of the major advantages of that property is the elevation, which takes it out of all but the most serious tsunami. So there will be, assuming that the voters approve that. There will be a safe place for our volunteers and our career fire and also a safe place for. People in the city to evacuate to in the event of a tsunami. We got additional pleadings on the US Bank Shannon Smith litigation. I got them today. They are asking for, the plaintiff is asking for another continuance in this case. I believe this will be the fourth continuance they've asked for. At this point, they have, all the other defendants are out of the lawsuit except for Shannon Smith and the City of Gearhart. I had a conversation with Shannon Smith's attorney, who many of you probably remember from. His litigation related to our short term rental and a couple of other things, Dean Alterman. So we've dealt with Dean before. He, you know, given the complexities of the case, the fact that the mortgage is. Against a one half interest of the property, but not the other, this seems, in my opinion, to be an opportunity for a structured settlement. And I encouraged him, if if they were kind of of that mind. That that maybe the the bank and the city and his client could get together and figure out something so that. The city gets paid and hopefully that not too long of a term and that. That the rest of the ownership issues get resolved. And and he seemed to be quite positive. Towards that, the other litigation that we were dealing with, which was that front yard remediation issue that is with insurance council. And insurance council basically was able to confirm what Chad and I had previously determined. That the city did not build or own or engineer any of that road infrastructure. Which am pipes, which is creating the problem. And all of that was constructed prior to those properties getting annexed to the city. So again, there is a problem, but it does not appear that it is our problem. However, if there's a way. That we can play a positive role in resolving it, of course, that's to everyone's best interest. Beyond that, from a transient lodging tax, I'll throw this in because it was it was previously mentioned. Except for the Portland, except for the City of Portland and some of the metro area. Virtually every region in the state is significantly better than they're doing than they did. The year before, even the year before that. So if you look at central Oregon, if you look at the Oregon coast. Clackamas County is about eighty percent of what they were a year ago in recent months. The City of Portland is at about twenty percent, between twenty and thirty percent of where they were. So obviously, they have been really, really negatively hit. But the places where it can go out into the woods, fresh air, fresh space, open space. Those have all done really well. So hopefully, those communities will continue to. Be a place where Oregonians want to go. And what I heard is primarily the visitors are Oregonians that normally would be getting on a plane. Are now would rather get in their car. And the rates that are being charged by the venues, so it's not just a matter of occupancy, which has gone up. But apparently the rates have gone up as well. So it's higher rates that people are willing to pay and then higher occupancy numbers. And again, that is almost every region outside of the Portland metro area is what I'm hearing. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. Otherwise, that's what I've got.
Okay, I'm not hearing anybody jump in with a question. So Chad, you gave us a written report. Do you want to highlight anything or got other things to report?
Yeah, it won't take very long. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. We have the playground donations. You're correct, Mayor. It's over thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. Twelve thousand twenty of that was is credited to Berkeley Sturgill's Quarter Mile Challenge. So that was an incredible effort by a young lady. Fire station update. Again, we're working on the boundary finance currently. And then we are also working on the current timeline for moving forward to August thirteenth and then November second. We finally have all of the information that we need and I will be presenting a brief timeline. And then a request for funds to move forward with the investigation portion of the fire department. Or the new fire station. Ridge path construction, we're looking at possibly June eighth, ninth and tenth. To go ahead and do some work on that. So I've reached out to Steve, who is our volunteer extraordinaire. And we'll see if we can put a group together. But regardless, those three days or maybe two of those days, city staff will be installing some of the larger timbers. On our radar, I wanted to talk to you about the special council meeting again, June eighth. We're shooting for six P M. on this one. And we're going to have potentially Brent's presentation from his committee. The potential transfers that we'd have to do for the current budget resolutions. And then we're going to talk about the fire station and the water bond. Of note, Mayor, did you want to announce anything about Independence Day?
Was that me you called on?
Yes. Yeah.
Fourth of July, wow, we've, we're all but, we haven't posted anything, but we hope to have the parade back. And, you know, we'll put out something that says, please, you know. Please be in smaller groups and social distance how you can and. Wear a mask if you're breathing on other people, something like that, whatever the current guidelines are in July. We hope everybody will be careful and. I think you told me that the firemen are gonna try and do a safe way of handing out hot dogs to the attendees. And so I think it'll be a good time for everybody to be out there and enjoying our city. And I I I thought that six thirty was the time that was posted for the. June eighth meeting. So we might need a clarification on that.
My apologies. I'll ask Kristi to take a quick look at that. You may be right.
And Chad, if I may, is it going to be a work session as it's listed on your report? Or is it going to be a special council meeting?
No, as I said kind of earlier, it is going to be a special council meeting because decisions will need to be made. And resolutions had. So that we just. The wrong topic on there. It is a special council meeting for that.
All right, thank you.
Tuesday, June twenty ninth, though, is going to be a work session. That is the fifth Tuesday. Working on things such as council blowers, noise, homelessness, and we go from there. Last few things, code enforcement has been pretty easygoing, not too much to do there. We made an adjustment to a new storage facility on Highway one oh one. Whereas things weren't placed quite correctly, but we are fixing that. No. No penalties have had to been issued or violation tickets. We had some tree cutting issue, which Council of Brent Warren has kind of been communicating with on Fifth Street. And upon a couple of different investigations, it looks like everything there is legal, the way that things are done. The finalizing audit, we'll talk about, we already talked about that. Really, Public Works, they're making almost eight hundred gallons of water right now. Our normal for this is about six hundred gallons of water. So I think that just kind of talks about how many people are actually in town and how dry things have been.
And Chad, would that have anything to do with the Mark McFadden replacing those two manifolds that were leaking with all the pinholes?
No, that was more of a, an issue that was starting to happen that had to do with. The way that the system operated, not how much water we either saved or made. So the the difference in water really is the amount of people that are in town and the watering of lawns and such. So so far, we're keeping up on the machines because of the work that Martin McFadden did are working very well.
Thank you.
At what point do we have to start some sort of? Water saving?
Water conservation efforts?
Yeah.
We do have a plan that if we begin to get into a severe drought or our aquifer begins to show that it's. Not running dry, if you will, but being affected. Then we do have our water master plan, things that we will do to curb. And most of it is just communication and a campaign to start saving water. And that's all that I have for right now.
Okay, thank you all.
May I ask a question about water?
Go ahead, Dan.
Water, if water production is up to that amount. Assuming we're not buying much water from Oregon right now, does that mean our revenue stream is? Is good from that standpoint? Meaning, are we? I would hope that our oversales of water are more than covering the cost of producing that water at this stage.
You're muted, Chad.
Thank you very much, Dan. Appreciate that, Carrie. So yeah, it looks like we are going to be over our budget for water sales this year. Right now, we are at. Forty water sales repeat, sales receipts of eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Which we're just seventy-two thousand dollars under our budget. We're going to exceed our budget with this last intake of water bills. And then that is above last year, but I don't have those numbers quite with me now. But yes, our revenues are up. Our expenses are not up as of yet because those will start taking hold this upcoming. Summertime, when we do switch over to part warranty and part in your heart line.
So so it seems like we're doing well from a budget, money and money out standpoint from that respect.
Yes, sir. I think we're going to be able to maintain and continue to put money into the reserve funds. For public works equipment and for the water reserve fund.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, our next item is correspondence and I did not see any in the packet. Is that correct?
No, I don't believe so, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And the next item is visitors. This is three to five minute visitor section. I personally don't have the hand up feature. Showing on my computer, so I'm gonna just go through the visitors and ask them if they wish to speak. They can just unmute and give their name and their address. So Darcy is the first. And. I see Bob next, Bob Maury. And.
Thank you, but I don't need to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. And Lisa?
No, thank you.
And the next, I'll just read out the area code to the phone number, three oh three. And the next, I'll just read out the area code to the phone number, three oh three.
Is that Jack Zimmerman?
Uh, no. That's
Okay.
Zero. Go ahead, Jack.
Okay, this is Jack Zimmerman. Address is four oh eight West Cursel Circle, Gerhardt. This is a question for Peter. Peter, on the, I didn't hear all of your comments because of a bad connection. But on the Olsted Exchange, I believe you said that the closing of that exchange is not contingent on bond approval. Is that correct?
Correct. So the idea is that the contingency in that transaction would be the property, the entire property coming within the urban growth boundary is part of that U G V swap. And so, you know, if we're looking at our volunteer staffing numbers, and Chief can probably speak to this, but in, a lot of areas are getting hit harder than Gerhardt, but Gerhardt is having less volunteers than traditional. And so one of the questions with the new station will be, you know, will volunteers be able to essentially live there? And if, if, because housing is becoming an issue and, and if, if not, then, you know, we're going to have, we might have to revisit some of that. So I think that the the property owners are acutely aware of that issue. And so in the event that voters were not to approve bonding in this November, which is I think when we anticipate going out, that would not foreclose us from doing a fire station there in the future. There are going to be some limitations into how we can use both parcels. They will need to be for a public purpose, so we're not going to be able to flip them for housing or something like that. But they are being, the owners are being flexible with us in approach.
Okay, thank you. I still, is there any consideration that an appraisal of some sort should be done to see the benefits the Olsted is getting in exchange for the benefits Gerhardt is getting?
Yeah, I, I anticipate that. So the, the first thing is we need to have both parcels surveyed. And it is shockingly difficult to find a surveyor who will return your calls at this point because yeah, no, it is, it is, uh, it has been, uh, it has been tough, but there's so much building activity going on that there's a backlog. So we're going to need to kind of walk those parcels, get them surveyed, get an idea for what those would be. As far as the value of the remaining property of coming within the urban growth boundary versus outside, that can be pretty difficult. I mean, because Oregon's unique in that it has this land use system. And so that's, that's not something that necessarily comes up in, in appraisals, but we can certainly, I mean, they are going to get some more lots. The benefits of the city are obviously the elevation of the site. We're going to get water service connectivity as part of that. And also, the lots are going to be smaller than they would be. Well, we're going to get the tax revenue from those houses where otherwise they'd be an unincorporated class of the county. But we're also going to get hopefully a more affordable product because the lot sizes would be smaller than they would be under the county zoning. So those are probably all factors that would go towards benefits to the city as well as benefits to the homeowner. I like to think the, of this though is one of those rare instances where literally everyone wins. So my guess is that at the end of the day, you know, they're going to benefit from this and, and so are we. But I, as far as how much so for either side, it's probably going to be tough to completely determine.
Is, was he required with the county on his plat approval to hook up to their sewer system?
No, he wasn't. And, you know, it's questionable as to whether they could have hooked up to city water because we have two competing, two competing call plan and code directives that would counsel be required to balance those in order to make that determination. But the, the main difference is that the, the lots, the lot size for the county lots would be twenty thousand square feet versus ten inside the city. Though the, the parcel that's going to be the park and the parcel that's going to be the fire station, that will be housing. So it's not a two to one ratio, but they definitely end up with some more lots. It solves the water problem. And it also let, allows the city to loop our water, adding redundancy to the system. So it is in the city's benefit for that to occur. There is that section in the comp plan though that says, you know, that extraterritorial services should be avoided. So if this were to fall through and they were go, to go back to county zoning, council would need to balance those two competing interests.
And just to clarify if I might, a majority, if not ninety percent of the county is also on septic, so there is not a county wide sewer system.
Okay. Is there any wetlands involved?
Or is it there?
Okay, thank you. Is there any wetlands involved in the fire station plot?
No, not, not in the, either the park, the area that's likely to be for the park or the fire station. There is the creek that is the, towards the western portion, but the development isn't anywhere close to that. And they would be following all the various riparian step back rules that apply citywide. And just from a, from a sewer versus septic, I think it's important to say this because this too is counterintuitive. And I've said it to the state and finally I think they, they get it. It's in the event of a tsunami, if everyone's on septic, then there are a certain number of systems that might be impacted. Versus if everyone's on sewer, the entire system could go down. And so like when Portland State came in and looked at our buildable lands inventory, housing needs analysis, and they're like, well, if you guys went on sewer, then you might get higher density. That's true, but in the event of a tsunami, our entire sewer system would go down, which would create a public health hazard. And so really the, kind of the experts that have looked at this, including Meg at D L C D who's as knowledgeable as anyone I've met on issues of tsunami, really have kind of lauded the fact that, that we're on septic instead of sewer. So it's probably really unlikely from a public health perspective that we want to change that, even if it allowed incrementally more dense development.
That's interesting because I was under the impression that if there's a flood inundation issue, the septic drain fields are contaminated and have to be abandoned. At least that's been my experience with flooding.
So what they've said with the tsunami is because it only is going to flood for a period of about fifteen minutes, it's not enough, it's not enough to compromise the drain fields. But if it did go into the pipes of a sewer, there would be those backflow issues and others. And so it actually would compromise, likely compromise the sewer system. So
Okay.
Seaside, but, but fortunately, uh, we
Yeah.
Kind of dodged that bullet.
All right. Thank you, Peter. Mayor, can I have another question, please?
One more question.
Oh, I had so many too. I'm going to ask this question in terms of Gail Hendrickson of the county and the head of the business development group there. And she's heading up the emergency preparedness committee. And I'm wondering, is Gerhardt participating in that process? And if so, will we be getting reports on that progress? And are we cooperating?
Madam Mayor, I can answer that for you if you like.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Gail Hendrickson is working on what's called the National Hazard Mitigation Planning. Gerhardt was a part in that throughout, and we have updated our plan just recently with city council as well on that. So we are updating, working along with, we constantly have meetings between the chiefs within the county. We have many meetings within the emergency services as far as the alert system that Kristi Fickers is having. And then the city administrators meet often to talk about this subject. Moving forward, we'll also have hopefully an expert in emergency services in regards to tsunami and that sort of thing that will help us with the design of the future fire station. So we are doing a lot. Not only that, but of course, we are ahead of the game with a couple of other communities in our cash system, barrel system, and, you know, having foodstuffs, energy, that sort of thing available. So I think we're doing a lot and we've improved a lot over the year. And I think that with the thinking, like the tsunami overlay zone that the city did, compared to many communities that did not, but a few did, we are, I think you'd say maybe a little ahead of the game. And I'm proud of the staff's work for doing that.
I, I would just, I would just add
I'm sorry.
Jack, I would just add to that, we have two members of our CERT team that, that attend what's called the five Cs, which is all of the CERT programs within the county. And that is run by the county emergency preparedness. So we have very strong ties with that group that meets monthly. And again, that's through our CERT, our community emergency response team. And we also have probably fifteen to twenty retired medical providers who have been working on the COVID vaccine task force, all from Gerhardt. So we're tied in with the county in many ways for emergency preparedness.
And just to clarify also, in March, we updated using resolution nine five five, which updated our hazard mitigation plan, which is now integral with the county, which is the first year that that's ever been done.
I, that's fine. I couldn't hear, I'm having trouble here in chat for some reason, but what about the county's consultants' concerns about soil liquefaction in the north dunes of Gerhardt?
I, I, I do, I do not know specifically about that, but farther back the dunes are typically, the more stable they are.
Correct. And, and also, the county does not have any concerns with the north dunes that I have been aware of, and we've had multiple conversations with them. As a matter of fact,
Why did the, why did the consultant report it in the story?
Liquification is across the entire region and that will happen. But the higher the dunes, the less liquefaction due to its
I don't, I agree, I agree. I'm just saying that in that particular article, they made it, the reporter now. I'm not saying the reporter's correct, but they made, that reporter made a very distinct reference to soil liquefaction problems in the north Gerhardt dunes area. Which I'm assuming, I'm assuming is part of, Olsted could be a part of that.
No, I think that was an error, actually. I don't, I don't recall that reporting. But what they were likely talking about was the area in McCormick Gardens Road, which is currently a swamp, which will see the most incidence because it is within the aquifer and become a new lake. So that is why the fire station being placed up in the eastern hills is really not an option because we would never be able to respond to almost any storm. So I think that's what that was.
So you're saying the reporter was incorrect in specifying and the consultant that Gerhardt had a soil liquefaction problem?
It would be the first I'd know about.
And that, my understanding, Degami made some comments about that same issue too.
Then we are definitely talking about the McCormick Garden Road area. The Degami would much prefer us to be on a dune. And the way that the dunes are, and I don't want to take too much time, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, but the way that the dunes are constructed is the dune where the Palisades are is a couple of thousand years younger than the dunes that we are talking about now to potentially put our station. So the dunes that we're talking about now are not only higher, but they're more stable.
So can council basically take advantage of that, the county's consulting groups' knowledge about what they found with regards to flood inundation, earthquake aftermath type stuff?
Yeah, we have used all of that information in the decisions that we're making. We're very in tune with all of it. And again, we're kind of a leader in that.
Well, Jack, Jack, can I just say that we've reached the limit of our time with questions and visitors. All right, so we, we've got to move on because we've still got the, the budget to go through and the road district. And honestly,
All right. And I apologize. I apologize. I totally agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Jack, thank you. Those are all good questions and, and I look forward to being able to go through all of this at a, at a future town hall and continue to educate all of our residents on all of these important issues.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate everybody's time and effort there.
Thank you. So the other two visitors, or there, there's one more visitor also with a three six oh area code and the last two numbers of their phone is two two. And if you'd like to speak, this would be the time. And not hearing anything, so we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. And if I could first get a clarification from Peter, are we needing to do a public hearing at this time or have we already done that? That was my recollection. Or are we just passing resolutions?
We, we've already done that. I mean, these are, this is the, these are things that were required by state law to formally accept state funds. And, you know, that's usually a pretty simple decision for people to make. Though I've always been surprised from time to time on issues, so I assume that the city would, we don't need to do, I don't believe that we'd need to do a public hearing on it, but you would need to affirmatively do the resolutions. And, and because those are resolutions, those are in place immediately versus the thirty days.
Okay, then I'm going to move on to resolution number nine five seven. A resolution stating the city of Gerhardt hereby elects to receive state revenues. And so what I need is a motion to approve.
I make a resolution that we approve resolution nine, I make a motion to approve a resolution. Nine five seven, a resolution stating the city of Gerhardt hereby elects to receive state revenues.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Carrie Smith made the motion and Brent seconded. And is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. The next one is a resolution number nine five eight. A resolution adopting the city of Gerhardt budget for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, imposing taxes, categorizing taxes and making appropriations for the city of Gerhardt. Do I hear a motion?
I would like, go ahead, Dan.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number nine five eight. Resolution adopting the city of Gerhardt budget for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, imposing taxes, categorizing taxes and making appropriations.
And is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Rita. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Hearing none, that motion passed and it was unanimous. Next item is resolution nine resolution nine five nine, a resolution adopting the Gerhardt Road District budget for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, imposing taxes, categorizing taxes and making appropriations for the Gerhardt Road District. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we adopt the resolution nine five nine. Uh, a resolution adopting the Gerhardt Road District budget for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, imposing taxes, categorizing taxes and making appropriations for the Gerhardt Road District.
And is there a second?
I'll second that.
And is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And those opposed? That motion passed unanimously. And moving on to resolution number nine six zero. A resolution fixing the compensation of the following officers of the city of Gerhardt. City Attorney, Chief of Police, Auditor, Treasurer and Judge and repealing all prior ordinances and or resolutions fixing the compensation of these officers of the city of Gerhardt. Do you, do I hear a motion to approve resolution nine sixty?
I move that we approve the resolution nine sixty fixing the compensation of city officers.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Yes, there is.
Uh, Dan?
No, Kerry.
Go ahead, Kerry.
Okay, uh, Chad. Unless you made the Fire Chief a city officer on your own at the very beginning of your tenure, you have to show that this is just a typo that someone put in. You cannot dismiss him as a city officer by just saying it's not in our charter because our charter on page uh, three zero point one three municipal judge and other officers states that the city council can make other officers and give them certain duties. And so you do not have the power to abrogate, abrogate. I think that's right. Um, a position that is a city officer. Don't want to rain on your parade, but that's the way I read the charter.
So to, to follow along with you, you are saying that the fact that we're adding, uh, the fire department, uh, or the fire chief, that they should or should not be in ordinance nine six zero.
They, well, if they were in the budget ten years ago, when you became city administrator, then you have to show that there was no ending of the fire chief being an officer of the city. You do not have that right or authority to say he isn't, because he's not in there because on that page that I just quoted, it says the council can name anybody else as an officer and give them certain duties. All I'm saying is according to this city and the way it's worked, the council would have gone along and said, ah, Fire Chief's going to be an officer of the city and give us a report.
Correct. And so as far as, is, uh, what the city staff knows, that the Fire Chief has never been an officer of the city of Gerhardt. They have been under the administration, uh, portion of that. And the main reason for that is that the city council, uh, you know, by law and some things such as treasurer and judge has to make those, uh, decisions. But also specifically, the city council in the past had wanted the police chief to be added in, uh, as one of those officers, uh, as kind of a separation from the administration. Uh, so that we, uh, the city council and or, or the city council can make decisions, but the city administration could not make decisions on, uh, the police chiefs hiring and firing, uh, and that is to separate, uh, the government powers, uh, from the administration side and the police, uh, police following the law. Uh, we're not able to, uh, tell them what they can enforce and what they cannot enforce. And that was the desire of the city council. And we have no record, uh, that we can find, uh, that the Fire Chief has ever been placed in that, uh, in, in that same position.
Okay, so in the six years I've been on the city council, I went back and it's always been listed as the Fire Chief as a city officer. You have to go back and show me that, uh, McNally is not showing it up on his agenda for the city council that the Fire Chief is not a, uh, a city officer. You cannot arbitrarily go and say because it's not in the charter that a city council has not moved to make the Fire Chief a city official. And that's what I'm getting at. You, you've got to show uh, you know, uh, like numbers, you've got to follow it back to the beginning. Show me at the beginning where you added it or it was just arbitrarily put in because you don't have that authority to say the Fire Chief is not a city official. You know, an officer of the city, uh, because.
If he hadn't, if he hadn't been made a city official, then you're right. I did not have the authority to make that change.
Right. And so show me.
You can help with that. And I think that we can go back and research this fairly easily.
Yeah, I mean, you got microflitch or whatever that's.
No, it's actually an old paper. It's an old paper.
Can we table this until the eighth?
Well, that, this is the officer's, uh, wages. So yes, we can, but I, I want to be clear on this because it's a point that, you know, if, if he's an officer and he just tonight reported as an officer, the interim Fire Chief, I want it's, it's, it's kept as an officer. I don't want it just being dismissed because it's uh, convenient or whatever. Thank you.
We'll need to go back and see at what point the Fire Chief be can being listed as a officer. And then once we get to that date, we can look back and see whether that was done, uh, via council action or not. Um, usually it's, it's better to prove the positive than to prove the negative. So we'll want, we'll want to find somewhere where the council and, and that sort of change would certainly be reflected in the minutes. So we take a look to see what happened. And then I think regardless of whether, um, it happened or not, it's probably worth the city council having a conversation to see whether going forward they want um, to separate that position in the same manner that they did with the police chief. If there's some uh, supervisory role for that or whether, um, it makes sense to have that position under the purview of the city manager.
Right. And you know, it's, uh, it's in the charter under the judge for other officers. And I just want to make sure that what we're doing is within the parameters of our jobs.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Uh, do we want to take a vote or would someone like to amend the motion? Can we do that?
I'm okay with my motion. Actually, I'm sorry. I didn't make that motion. I think that, I'm okay with the motion.
I'd like to make a second motion that we table this until next Tuesday's meeting.
How about, how about this? We go forward with this motion and if we determine that the Fire Chief was, should be an officer, then we can do an amended resolution or a new resolution to include that position going forward.
Well, I've made a motion, Brent, and.
We already have a motion on the table.
No, you can't make a motion because there was a motion on the table, Kerry.
And it was seconded.
Well, I withdraw my motion.
So we'll, we'll, uh, take a vote now. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No. So was that five two?
Should be three two.
Yeah, sorry, three two. Sorry, getting tired. Um, okay, that motion carries, uh, but as Kerry suggested, uh, if staff could go back and find the actionable item from the city council that put the Fire Chief on as an officer, uh, as it's been for, uh, as long as I've been on the council as well. So, um, we could get that clarified at our next meeting.
Will do, Madam Mayor. It's not a difficult task, actually.
Thank you. Um, the next one is resolution nine six one, the budget category transfer for the Hazard Mitigation Fund.
Well, I make a motion that we pass resolution nine six one uh, and resolve that the city council, uh, transfer eight thousand eight hundred and seventy eight dollars from the general fund to the Hazard Mitigation Fund.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, and, okay, that's it.
Moving on to old business, um, we have the employee handbook amendments. Uh, there's the packet with the latest draft amended June second. There was a page of, uh, mostly typographical errors uh, that was lined out in your packet. Uh, and we would like a motion to approve this as a final council options. Motion to approve the handbook as amended, make further changes or do nothing, uh, as in table for further discussion. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the six two version of the employee handbook.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Sorry, opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Uh, the next item is, uh, new business, a request for funds of Public Works Truck. Um, there were a couple of bids attached to, uh, Director Mark McFadden's, uh, requests. Um, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second.
Okay, there is, uh, a motion by Kerry, a second by Dan. Is there discussion? Not sure what that was. It sounded like some feedback. Um, Rita, did you have a question?
No, that was just my scanner. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I should have turned it off. I apologize.
Right. Uh, well, I do have a comment. Um, I would like to see the next vehicle we get be electric. Um, maybe the technology's not quite there yet. I don't know, but it does give me distress to see another F two fifty gas vehicle getting purchased. So.
Mayor, I can make a real quick report on some of the, uh, to update this request. Um, in regards to what you were talking about, Mark McFadden actually brought that also to me as he was really looking at the Ford Lightning as well. He thought it was a very interesting, uh, idea for the Ford Lightning. But again, we're just in the first year of that, so we weren't willing to be guinea pigs. But, uh, he's looking, uh, at making that a purchase for the next vehicle. And then we may do that also for the fire department, uh, depending on how these, those things work. So it is something that's, uh, we're definitely keep an eye on. We're going to have to replace some other trucks here soon, uh, anyways, all of our other trucks have, uh, a hundred thousand plus on them uh, within the Public Works Department, but we have made some improvements is with, uh, carpool now for the, uh, uh, the public work staff, uh, the trucks behind here and then carpooling over. Um, we put those stickers on there that you requested and Kerry Smith, of course, we have the fasten your seatbelt uh, stickers affixed to the dashboards. So there have been some improvements in that.
Okay, any other comments then? All those.
I, I, this is related, uh, do we have a process in place to uh, dispose of surplus vehicles once they've exceeded their useful life?
Yes.
Yes, we do. We use a closed bid process where we put the, uh, information in the paper and various other places, request a closed bid that ends on a certain date. And then I'll usually have a city councillor, uh, helping me open those bids. And, uh, then we accept one of the big, the highest bid, uh, to purchase this specific vehicle. We'll probably be doing that for the Dodge Durango here soon.
Okay. Thank you for educating me.
Um, so we have a motion and a second, I believe. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Um, feedback session would be for any of the guests, the visitors. Uh, uh, three minutes, I'm going to time it and give us any feedback on the meeting that you've just listened to. Um, and this would be Darcy. Just go ahead and unmute if you'd like to give us meeting feedback. Seeing none, Lisa. And seeing nothing there, Chris. And then the person with area code three oh three. And area code three six zero, phone number ending in five five.
I think that's me. I'm not sure. This is Jack Zimmerman.
That's you.
I just wanted to, uh, say how nice it was to hear Justine talk about as treasurer. Uh, I thought that she gave some very clear and uh, very detailed responses and it's refreshing to hear. And I, I personally appreciate, uh, that quality of representation of the city.
That's great. Great to hear those compliments. Absolutely. Thank you. And the next is caller with, uh, area code three six zero and, uh, last two digits, two two. Not hearing any comments. I'm going to move to council concerns. Rita?
Well, I do have a concern. I noticed that in the budget, we have set aside $10,000 for sidewalk repair. And I had a citizen complaint about the sidewalk that is west of the sweet shop all the way to Gin Ridge. That sidewalk is just in terrible condition. So I would really appreciate some, some sidewalk repair. And on a different note, I, I always enjoy the reports from the Fire Chief. And I know that the police chief and I'm sure Public Works is reluctant to make a report to us every month. But maybe if we could just have a report quarterly or biannually, I would really appreciate that. Because I have questions for them and it would be nice to hear from them. So that's all I have.
As in presence at the meeting?
Well, yeah, because like I, you and I both had questions about the police report and it would be nice if we could just know what that's about. And I know the police chief is very reluctant to appear in a city council meeting. That's, you know, so that's why I'm saying even if he just does it twice a year, I would be happy. And I know that would make our, our meetings longer and I, I understand that. And that makes me hesitate to even introduce the topic, but I'm just throwing it out there. And that's all I have.
I've got that note. Thank you. Actually, Mark McFadden was scheduled to be here and he intended to be here tonight to also talk about this pickup truck. But he had to take care of an emergency by coaching a young lady's softball team at the last moment, so.
And, and to add to that, one of the questions that I hear in the past is what does Public Works do? And I met with Mark McFadden and I know all about the water department. But the public works side of that, other than the water department, I'm not really too sure. So it would be nice if they could come and they'd say something like, oh, we're unplugging the culverts or we're fixing the street. That'd be really helpful, I think, to the community as well. Thanks.
I agree, Rita, but both with the police and public work. It'd be nice to have at least an occasional bi-monthly quarterly report.
Yeah, just stop in and say aye.
Thank you, Rita.
You're welcome.
Brent?
I have no concerns at this time.
Okay, and Dan?
Any plans as to when we're going to start meeting in person again?
Uh, next to, on the eighth, a special meeting.
Oh, you gotta be joking.
No.
Okay.
Not for the public. It'll just be the counselors in the council chamber, probably. We're still working out the details. Peter, you're welcome to come via Zoom.
If it stays this hot in Portland, I might be joining you guys.
You're always welcome.
Hotter than Hades here.
Someone asks if you're vaccinated.
I am, I have bull shots and it's been over a month. So I'm, I'm not going to say that I'm feeling footloose and fancy free, but you know, I'm substantially less worried than I was three months ago.
Right. Okay, so we'll, we'll get something out if there's any details that you all need to know. But we're, that is currently the plan. I think. It's not set in stone.
We just got a few technology issues to work out. And then the public will be able to attend the meeting via Zoom. And the city counselors and some staff will be able to attend the meeting in person. So it's going to be a hybrid of what we're doing now and should work well. Say this last words.
Right, just like Brent's freezing.
Yeah, I, I just got a new router a few days ago. It doesn't seem to be working.
Dan? Did you have?
Yep. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kerry?
The only thing I've got is what I stated at the beginning with Justine and Chad. So it's redundant for me. Thank you, though.
Okay. We have reached the end of our agenda, so I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn immediately.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 And I'll, I'll turn on my video to say goodbye.
You're frozen.
I, I.
In goodbye.
I look forward to seeing everybody next week.
Yeah, that sounds good, Dan. Okay.
Bye bye.
Guys, bye. See you later.